February 25th, Longmont City Council meeting to order. This is our regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
President.
Councilmember Bagley.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos. Mayor Coombs, we have four.
Thank you. I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their list on that, who do not place their names on that list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or at final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. And then we have the approval of the minutes for the February 11th. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the minutes as presented for February 11th meeting for approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Mayor Coombs, there are none tonight.
Is there a report from the City Manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Again, wanted to talk about, we are still conducting our neighborhood meetings related to flood recovery and issues in several neighborhoods in our community. This Wednesday, we will have a meeting with the Valley Neighborhood at Westview Middle School. On Thursday, we'll have a meeting with Golden Ponds Neighborhood at Westview Middle School. John is still working to try to set up a meeting with Bon Farm Neighborhood and also the commercial businesses that were impacted by the flood off of, in the area where Isaac Walton breached. The other thing I wanted to add, during the first meeting, we had a question regarding the specific timeline in terms of the evacuation notice for Greens, Champion Greens in the Valley. As part of our presentation to those neighborhoods, we have gone in and looked at a timestamp and we have added that to the presentation that we were providing to the various neighborhoods. We also just filmed, John Clark and Dan Neiman did a short film today talking about that timeframe and it will be placed on our website and those neighborhoods that weren't able to get that information will be notified that it's on our website.
Okay, thank you. So Sandy, are you going to present the Lassie Project now?
Actually, no. Mayor Coombs, John Guyden, the co-founder of Lassie Project is here to speak to you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is John Guyden, co-founder of the Lassie Project. We're here today for your support. The Lassie Project is relentlessly focused on preventing child abductions. We do that by allowing parents the ability to press a button and have hundreds of people looking for their missing child in seconds. Those people make up what we call the Lassie Village. And the Lassie Village is comprised of the community, people that live and work right here in Longmont. I forgot to mention earlier that the Lassie Project is headquartered here in Longmont as well. We're here for your support to help grow the village and the city of Longmont so we can show an example to the rest of the country of how a community can protect our children. I'd like to open up any questions at this time.
Councilmember Levison.
Does this app cost any money?
It's absolutely free.
Absolutely free. And then do you have privacy settings also? So, you know, there was something on the news about how many apps will then allow other information to go out that locates your GPS location and all that kind of stuff. So do you have some security protections?
Absolutely. We have an airtight privacy policy and security policy. So we'll never share anybody's information. Our goal is to protect the kids.
All right, thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment that I had, that apps loaded on my cellphone, it was pretty fast loading and real easy. So, you know, just as a private citizen, I think it's a great project and I'm really excited that it's something that started here in Longmont. And, you know, it's, I think it grew out of the Jessica Ridgeway situation. So, you know, maybe if we all had something like this, we could prevent a horrible tragedy in the future. So I don't see a downside for us not to embrace this thing wholeheartedly. I think it's a great project and I appreciate you bringing it to council. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would, I would move that we endorse the project.
Second. Okay. Let's vote.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Since we have Jeff Satter in the audience, can you come down and give us your viewpoint from the police department? You know, how would you utilize this, this application in our normal kind of protocol? How would you add this in as part of the protocol of police department?
Well, as you know, in May of 2013, we had a kid kidnapped by his father and they fled to Canada. And one of the biggest difficulties we had is, it was a planned operation, we didn't know where they were going. And it took us a little while to locate him. With this application, we could have probably found him very quickly. Once we figured out their phones, we were able to ping those phones and we had the grandfather located within a couple hours and we located Monty through other means the next day. But if we had this application, we could have put it into effect right away and probably got him before he got out of town.
You could have probably pinged all the neighbors in the neighborhood too. Okay, great. I just wanted to hear that perspective since you were in the audience. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I had a couple of questions to kind of explain how it works.
Okay.
So basically, you start off with the parent, right? Setting up a profile for their child. So they'll put the picture and all the other pertinent information that they feel comfortable sharing. Next, they're going to create zones, home, school, friend's house, you name it, and then the routes the child takes to and from those places. And then they create what's called the parent list. That's mom, dad, trusted uncle Frank. And then they set it as complete for the parent's perspective. Now, once the child leaves home and headed to, let's say, school, the Lassie Project makes sure that they are on the attended route. If they deviate too far from that intended route, that's when the parents immediately get a notification saying, hey, your kid's off course. They can see exactly where the child is at the moment and they can call the child, close the incident if everything's okay, but if there's an issue, that's when they escalate. We get involved, our call center right here in Longmont gets involved, makes sure that, you know, that that is a legitimate escalation and then we basically draw a radius around that child and get the community involved.
Okay, great. So we'd all get a ping on our phone saying, hey, this kid's missing and?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And this is something you sign up for?
Absolutely. 100% opt-in.
When they presented this to staff, one of the questions I asked because as participants, so if you didn't have a child that you wanted to be part of this, you would sign up as well and it would notify you if you're in the radius. And so one of my questions was, well, how do you ensure that, are you doing background checks on people that sign up for this because you obviously don't necessarily want somebody with a questionable background getting these notifications and so you might want to?
Absolutely. Yeah, so everybody who joins the village is referenced against all of the available lists provided by the Department of Justice. So if you show up on one of those lists, we don't alert the individual, but we do suppress that name so they never receive an alert.
Okay, great. Sounds awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent. Thank you so much for coming out and presenting to us.
Mayor Coombs, you don't have any ordinances on second reading? Oh, I'm sorry, it's public invited to be heard.
Okay, public invited to be heard, we have Marilyn Hughes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Marilyn Hughes and my address is 1126 Fourth Avenue. I noticed regional transportation was on the agenda tonight and so I thought I'd attend and say once again that I believe Longmont deserves commuter rail, not bus rapid transit. Longmont has been paying the RTD tax, including myself, for at least 10 years. I don't want to hear about other plans. To put it bluntly, I want my rail and I'd really like to have it before I was 90. So, thank you for holding fast for rail in Longmont.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Mr. Mayor. Congressman members, thank you very much. So I was here a few weeks ago. I live in Mill Village at 238 Sweet Valley Court. I'm just going to speak real quickly about the proposed development that is taking place at Zlaton, right on the east side of County Road 1. Real quickly, the sentiments haven't changed. The main thing would be, what would be the difference between Copper Mill and this proposed development? I think sustainability works on the other side of the development. And then ecologically speaking, you know, speaking with members of the Audubon Society, you have the Raptors also that are actually a little bit closer to this area that should be considered, as well as the keystone species that also inhabit that area. But, you know, we got the property value issues, quality of life and all that. So I won't beat a dead horse. I was up here for a full three minutes the last time, but just wanted to keep that fresh in your head that that's kind of what we're all thinking about at Mill Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no other people that have signed up tonight, so I'll close, public invited to be heard.
Now there's no second reading or ordinances or public hearings, so we'll move on to consent agenda. First item is 9A, ordinance 2014-07, a bill for an ordinance approving the land use amendment to the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan for Sandstone Vistas, generally located east of County Line Road, south of Zlaton Drive, and west of Sandstone Ranch Community Park. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 18th. 9B is ordinance 2014-08, a bill for an ordinance approving the Fourth Amendment to the agreements in furtherance of annexation for the Wyville property of the Wyville Duval Annexation to the city of Longmont, Colorado. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for March 18th. Item 9C is ordinance 2014-09, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as the Sherwood property to Scott Schlegel tenant. The public hearing and second reading is scheduled for March 18th. Item 9D is ordinance 2014-10, a bill for an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 16, Sections 020, 030, and 050 of the Longmont Municipal Code Regarding Prostitution. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for March 18th. Item 9E is Resolution 2014-20, adopting a defined benefit pension policy for the city's defined benefit pension plans. Item 9F is Resolution 2014-21, approving the 2014 Intergovernmental Agreement for Bus Service between the city of Fort Collins and the city of Longmont. 9G is Resolution 2014-22, approving the Intergovernmental Agreement between the city and Colorado Conservation Board for grant funding for stream restoration training. Item 9H is Resolution 2014-23, approving the Intergovernmental Agreement between the city and Boulder County for its energy services outreach program. Item 9I is Resolution 2014-24, approving the Intergovernmental Agreement between the city and Boulder County for a lease of the Boulder County Fairgrounds for a July 4th fireworks display. And item 9J is 2014 Legislative Update and Request for Council Support of Bills. There are three bills being requested that you support. Senate Bill 14-121 concerning financial assistance for local governments after a declared disaster emergency. House Bill 14-1269 concerning the circumstances under which persons who sells items subject to sales tax must collect such sales tax on behalf of the state. And House Bill 14-1279 concerning the creation of a state income tax credit to reimburse a business for personal property taxes paid in the state. And staff does not have the need to remove any consent agenda items.
Councilmember Levison.
Yes, can I remove A and B? I have a couple of questions on both those items and I'll just wait and see if anybody else wants to remove.
Councilmember Finley?
I'd move the consent agenda minus A and B.
All right, let's vote.
Just a second.
Okay, the consent agenda minus A and D passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent.
And the first item is the ordinance 2014-07 regarding Sandstone Vistas and Erin Fostick is here to answer questions.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. First question about notice, it said that the notice was given to 750 feet from the proposed development and when there was a lot of blank land and Walmart, is that adequate notice when, you know, we obviously have an adjacent neighborhood person coming? Was the adjacent neighborhood area of Mill Village not noticed as an adjacent neighborhood?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, 750 feet is the notice requirement for major development applications, including comp plan amendments. And so that's what we instructed the applicant to notice in this case.
But if it's all surrounded, if it's in an island of, I mean, nobody came forward from the city. The city was one of the notices too, right? The city staff. Because city owns a lot of the adjacent land too, right?
Did we notice ourselves? I guess we, the applicant probably nailed the notice to the city. Yeah, I have one in the file. I didn't, I didn't comment on the application.
Well, besides you, who would else, who else would have commented? I mean, we have a member of the public who said, well, you know, there are wildlife impacts in the last application with copper mill apartments. We did see something from the Department, Colorado Department of Wildlife and we don't have any comment here at all.
So I should clarify, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, we have public noticing requirements, so notices of application and notices of public hearing, the public hearing notices will go out to property owners within that 750 feet. But we also have what are called referrals that go out to referral agencies like the school district, Division of Wildlife, Comcast, Weld County in this case. And so those are a little bit different. We did receive comments from Weld County and Excel. Those are the only two referral agencies that we got comments for. This application's slightly different from the Copper Mill application that was before you a couple of weeks ago in that there's not really a development proposed with this. This is strictly a land use amendment. That application was essentially the same, but they had a more detailed concept plan that showed, you know, essentially site plan level details for development. This does not have a development proposed with it. It's simply a land use amendment, not a rezoning with a concept plan.
And we wouldn't send notice to the Department of Wildlife on adjustment of comp plan amendment as this is?
In some cases, I think we would. In this case, it's actually going from a more intense residential land use to a less intense land use. I would anticipate that if this is approved and a development plan application is filed, that at that time, we would send comments obviously to referral agencies, which would probably include that agency. But at this time being that we're going from medium and high density to low and high density, it's actually a less intense land use. So we didn't send comments to them on the land use amendment?
But shouldn't we as a rule though? I mean, if there's any land use change, does the ordinance say, does our rule say that we should regardless? I mean, it doesn't really matter if it's going to less intense or more, they would have the same comments probably, you know, just to be, to have, reiterate whatever previous comments they had perhaps.
We don't typically send them every application that we get, but in the future, we could certainly send them, you know, we don't, we don't always get referral comments from them. But as I mentioned, certainly when, you know, if this gets further down the road, we would obviously send them comments.
And then one thing that I couldn't tell is, so one thing that I couldn't tell that would be useful is to have some kind of an, you know, a compare and contrast. So when it says there's this much that was this previous designation, to have that drawn instead of just having the big block of the whole area, the, to see where it is geographically and how that's changing, where the density is going to be clustered differently. That would be helpful. So I don't, not, that's why I asked, so if we could see that on second reading, that would be great.
Sure, I can bring a map that shows what the existing land use is. I'll put that in my presentation, the existing.
Well, can you send it to us electronically as an amendment to our packet for the next time? Sure. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I was going to point out that this is totally a different thing than Mill Village where we went from an industrial use to a medium to high density residential use. And here, we're actually reducing the density, we're taking 35 acres from medium and making that low and 24 from high and making that median. So that would have less impact, I would think, on the wildlife, the neighborhoods around. So I don't think at this point, there's any reason to really oppose this land use amendment because it's actually moving in the directions that I would think that people would want to move in based on traffic flows and wildlife and every other consideration. Councilmember Bagley, I'm not seeing the screen here anymore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, I would disagree with my good friend and our current mayor, just a little bit. And here's why. The, my thinking last time when we were talking about this particular area was, we have the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan down there has a big question mark. What do we need? Ideally, everyone's going to say, we want low-density residential neighborhoods. And so, I mean, if we all built all over Longmont, low-density residential, Longmont wouldn't work. So I don't know what we need down there. And so if I'm hesitant to approve or get behind any type of changes to the LAP until I see the data, until staff comes back and says, we've looked at it, this is what we need, this is what we approve. So voting for it might make the Mill Village residents happy, sad, I don't know, but it might not be what's best for Longmont. We, we just don't have the data. And so I'm going to be voting against it because I don't want city staff to focus on this. I'd rather see the LAP updated and see what we need down there.
Councilmember Moore?
I have to agree with Councilman Bagley in that we've asked for the, for that area of the LAP to be reworked and come back with a new plan. And this circumvents that process and so I will not be supporting it.
Councilmember Levison?
And actually, I was going to bring up in council comments, the fact that you had inserted an information item around the plans to update this area of town. And I was just hoping that we wouldn't see a lot of land use changes because that throws another ball into the air. The other thing is, would you be, could we, Harold, get a presentation on that plan? Because when things get in our information section, sometimes we don't give it as much attention. Plus publicly, it's hard for the public to drill down to that level of the packet when a lot of it, you know, looks like very perfunctory stuff, like here's a copy of all the agendas from the committees and some of the minutes and the council calendar. It's really hard for them to, you know, get those items, especially when this has been a very contested area of, of land use changing and issues. So I don't know, with the comments that I'm hearing, I'm not sure whether or not we want to make a motion to table this, land use amendment pending the work of the LAP, or whether or not there's, we can, we can vote it down certainly if we wanted to, but we could also table it. So I'm not sure. I guess I'd like more discussion around it to see what other people are thinking.
Well, you know, the fact is that the planning and commission, the planning and commission voted seven to zero to recommend this land use change. I know they're just an advisory board, but, you know, it's a pretty unanimous decision. And they spent a lot of time and effort. But I agree with everybody's opinions too. I think Councilmember Bagley made some good points and that maybe we just need to wait till the overall comprehensive plans come out. So I'm fine if we want to table it or delay this till we get more overall information on the whole area.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, if I may, I could give a brief update on the information item that was in your packet regarding the southeast subarea land use amendment that you all directed us.
May I respond, Mayor, to your comment?
Councilmember Levison, yes.
Thank you. I think one of the things that I did not see, and this is that kind of nuance when we get presented with the information that planning and zoning approved this seven to zero, they weren't asking the same questions we're asking as far as, they asked Councilmember Finley, who's their liaison, to bring up to the council a discussion around land use stuff because they were struggling with it. But that never entered in to any of their discussion, nor did any of the commissioners, nor would they be empowered to jump from a specific case they were asked to consider to this larger discussion. And so while they might have approved it to seven to zero, doesn't mean they wouldn't have had the same questions saying, well, is this the best use, as Councilmember Bagley has begun the discussion. Especially when, were they aware that we were taking the action to look at this subarea already when they took this up? Had they been given a presentation on that?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, when we presented the Copper Mill project, which is the project that you all looked at a couple of weeks ago, we had made the recommendation that we take a look at this general area, you know, which is what you see in that vicinity map in your info items. And they made that request of Councilmember Finley, who is their liaison, who then brought it to you. So I think that, you know, she agreed to do that and did do that. So we did advise planning commission that this would be happening. You know, this application, as well as Copper Mill, which I know we discussed last time, were both in process before we, before council directed staff to undertake this update, which is the reason that, you know, staff is bringing them forward because the applicant has entered into the process and, you know, so that's why they're coming before you. The applicant's not here at first reading tonight, but certainly will be here on second reading to do their presentation. You know, I can't, I can't say what planning commission might have asked. I don't, I don't know. They certainly didn't have questions. There wasn't, you know, if you look at the minutes, frankly, a lot of dialogue about this, this application. Certainly, the Copper Mill application had a lot more questions and conversation than this, this one did. But I can't say if they may have had similar questions to what council is asking. They didn't ask them if they did. They didn't ask them if they did.
So let me make sure I understand. So they took this up January 21st, before any of our discussion about, so they wouldn't have even known. It would have been a large leap for one of the, the commissioners to say, "Oh, well, we had this other discussion and, and Councilmember Finley hadn't even had the opportunity to bring it to the council." So to me, it seems like they had a void. Now that it's coming to us with this much of a time gap, it seems like there's enough of a void in the information that they base their seven to zero decision on, and what we're seeing, especially in light of the Copper Mill discussion, that, you know, perhaps we should just set this item aside until we look at that, the work that the Planning Department's going to do for some of the, the area planning, to see if it really fits in. Because then there's even more, there's more of a public discussion around it. Otherwise, it would seem unfair to the developer or the owner of the property if the study that the staff does yields a different result for land use mix in this area. So I'm hesitant to go forward with this right now.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. To me, this is a completely different project. Number one, it lowers the density. And number two, we have local people who are developing it. I, I would vote for it, quite frankly. And time is money for developers, so I would hate to see us delay it.
Councilmember Levinson?
There's nobody's thrown a motion out there. I'm going to make a motion that we table this item until we get some results of... Staff's having a papa. So my motion is that we table this item to allow time for the subarea planning work to go forward.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You were interrupted, and you were going to update us on the update of the comprehensive plan. I'd like to hear that before we vote.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley, as Councilmember Levinson indicated, there's a very brief information item included in your information items tonight, one of many, that, I mean, basically, we're, we're starting the process. A couple of weeks ago, council directed us to undertake a subarea plan land use amendment. So we've had conversations with staff to identify an area that's approximately 1,100 acres, includes, these are approximations, about 370 properties, roughly from 119th, kind of following the railroad tracks north over and essentially following our planning area in Weld County, including, you know, over to the eastern edge of our planning area, down to Sandstone Ranch, Community and District Park, and then the southern edge of our planning area, which is the river. So our intention is, again, that, that process has just kicked off. We've been, Ben Ortiz and I are working on that project. We've been meeting with city staff, who obviously have potentially projects and interests in that area, to kind of get a lay of the land and figure out what's going to be important from a comp plan perspective. We're planning on mailing notices to property owners within that area. We've, we've started initial conversations with some of the property owners, and certainly I've been in contact with Mill Village Homeowners Association in order to have them help us get the word out, you know, through Nextdoor, which is something that they actively use to communicate with their neighborhood. But we'll be mailing notices out. We're planning on having a public meeting in March, where we can have all of the property owners come. We can give them an overview on, you know, kind of some of the background and history, some of the recent land use decisions that have either occurred or have been applied for. And so what, you know, really what the need for this land use amendment is, and, and kind of what we're thinking that it will encompass. We also plan to give them an update on some of the other items that are going on citywide in terms of, you know, for instance, transportation, existing and future plans in the area, what's going on with the southeast urban renewal area that's adjacent to and kind of contained partially within this area, parks and open space. There's obviously some considerations for wildlife and other open space, and, you know, some things that may be coming out of the Parks Master Plan. Certainly, land use, there's some history on land use in this area that we'll want to share with them. So the meeting will be kind of twofold, one, to provide them information, but also, probably more importantly, to get information from them on, you know, what do they really feel like they need, like what they would want to see in this area is what we have today? What they want to see? Are there different land uses that they'd like to see? You know, part of the information will be a summary of our land supply analysis in this area. This area is pretty much all entirely the McLean neighborhood, planned neighborhood planning area, and then a portion of the East Side neighborhood planning area. So we'll give them information on the land supply in, in both of those areas, also the subarea and the city as a whole, so they can, you know, kind of weigh that information and figure out if there's other types of land uses they'd like to see. If so, what are those? We'll probably have some follow-up meetings with some of the larger property owners in this area and people that may not be able to attend the public meeting. Certainly, if we're going to be proposing land use changes, we want to do that in partnership with the property owner, not at odds with them. So we'll be involving various property owners through the process. We would anticipate, obviously, working with Planning Commission, this would go to them first. We're thinking that that would likely be sometime in late spring, and then back to council in early summer, sometime before mid-July. We, we would like to have this wrapped up. So that's our, our plan at this point. You know, we, we don't have a moratorium on development applications in this area, so people are free to, to submit development applications in the meantime in this area. And we'll, we'll process those as staff. So it's possible that, that you may see additional applications before you. Certainly, we'll let council know when that meeting is, if, if you're interested in attending. But that's kind of our plan at this point.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So just to read it, my first question was, if you had to create a self-imposed deadline, you said it was more or less the end of July, right? You're like, holy crap.
Sometime before July 22nd would be ideal.
Okay. Why July 22nd?
Uh, because I'll be out of the office after that.
Okay. All right. That's, that's a good, that's, that's awesome. Nice. So I guess, so I guess the, I completely concur with my colleague and fellow council member, Councilmember Finley. If it was, if they were coming forward and, and wanting to build as it is in the LACP, I'd be like, not a problem. But making changes, that's where I go, whoa, I don't want to make changes. So I, I'm not proposing that we have a moratorium, but I would, I didn't hear a second, but I would actually move that we table this until, until on or around the 22nd of July, or, or as soon as we have the LACP updated for that particular area. And would actually instruct staff to bring it back if this particular applicant wants us to consider it then. I don't want it to get lost.
So the other option would be, I'd be happy to talk with the applicant, and, you know, I don't know if they'd be willing to kind of self-impose tabling it. Obviously, that couldn't happen until second reading, since they're not here. I can't speak for them.
Then I'll withdraw my motion and go and talk to them. That's what I'd say.
Councilmember Levinson?
So the second, the, the first motion was to do precisely what you were saying. So, yeah, and I think Councilmember Moore did. So the time certain I was thinking is specifically related to the date that you said we would be wrapping up that subarea plan. So that, I, can I, I guess I can amend my motion to, to add that July 22nd deadline? And I don't know if this makes the city attorney very happy.
Go ahead, Eugene.
Mayor and council, Eugene, may city attorney. One thing I wanted to bring up for council's consideration is that the applicant is not here, and they have not had an opportunity to...
Present their...
Present their perspective. And certainly, the applicant can review the video, hear council's concerns. Perhaps, to give him that opportunity, we could, council could consider moving this item on to second reading, clearly understanding what the council's concerns and perspectives are, give the applicant an opportunity to speak to council about the different options to move forward on this.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great suggestion.
But in terms of your motion, I don't think there's anything wrong with the motion.
Right. Hey, we got a motion, it's in second. Why don't we vote on that at this point?
The motion fails.
The motion fails. It's a, yeah, three to three. Okay, so it will go forward, the second, council member?
Actually, we have to, I move that we pass, I move that we pass ordinance 2014-07.
Okay.
And then we'll, that way, it'll go on a second reading.
Right, okay. I'll second that. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on that motion then. Okay, that passes five to one, with Councilmember Levinson descending and Councilmember Santos
Your next item that was pulled is ordinance 2014-08, and Eva Pacheski is here to answer
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, ma'am. You know, Eva, I just want to thank you for spending the time explaining some things involving this item in our discussion this afternoon on the phone. I had a, and I also did receive your email with the additional map from the comprehensive plan. So there were, the questions that I had, I guess, again, it just relates for a second reading, so that we have the copy of the comprehensive plan attachment you sent me in the email available for council members to look at. And also, I guess I had a question related to the fact that when we were talking today on the phone, you indicated there was going to be a neighborhood park, and there was, the comp plan calls for a neighborhood park adjacent to the western edge of the, the development as a whole, and the site for another elementary school. We did have a little discussion around how much money the city has to build new parks and maintain them. And I'm just wondering if, how likely it is that the amenities for this neighborhood, how likely it is that that will be, we be, be built in the interim, as opposed to having this extra land for, within the neighborhood park? So I don't know, Kim, I don't know, Kim, if you had it, Kim Sugar, if you've had an opportunity to take a look at this project and the, okay. Oh, could you do a small presentation on it, please, if you don't mind?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council, council members and Councilmember Levinson. Yes, Councilmember Levinson called me this afternoon. She wanted to know, there is a neighborhood park on our proposed neighborhood park area on the comprehensive plan. She wanted to know where that was in relation to this project site. And then she wanted to know where the closest existing neighborhood park is. So she asked me to make a blow up of the comp plan map and then circle those things. So I will just pass this around, if you, thank you. So this is what I gave Councilmember Levinson, and it's just a comp plan map. And it shows that adjacent, immediately west of this site, there is a designated area for neighborhood park, as well as a school site that's designated currently on the comp And as far as the second question, which was, what is the feasibility of the city being able to construct said park? I don't have the answer to that right now. I know there's a Parks Master Plan in progress right now, so I think we're, Parks Department's trying to work through that. And then I believe that the applicant for this project may be coming with a second application and have some ideas about the park site, but that's not fully fleshed out
Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you. I guess the reason I pulled it off on first reading is just to get this information, and if this can be included for our packet for second reading, I'd appreciate it. And then, hearing from Kim Sugar about, you know, the feasibility of how soon the neighborhood park would get built for these two parcels, because the amendment to the annexation agreement just involves the Wyboll property, which is the one furthest to the east. And then the Duval is the one that would be abutting the proposed neighborhood park area. Okay. And I guess, I don't, I wasn't around, you know, paying much attention in '98. I just moved here to know what the background thinking was of the council when they did this. So can you fill in some of those gaps, too, of why it wasn't just for exceptional benefit? Was there some idea that the council wasn't sure about the buildout of all these parks?
Right, so Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levinson, that's correct. Kind of alluded to that in the staff report. You know, typically, when there's a residential subdivision, we have minimum landscaping standards in our zoning code and land development code. And it says that 20% of the whole land area, whatever that is, has to have landscaping. And so we do the math, and we figure out what, what those acres are, and then they have to provide a pocket park or something of that nature, types of common open space in the subdivision. And so when council looked at this annexation agreement, they did an amendment. At the time, there were three proposed neighborhood parks in this general area of southwest Longmont, and they went through some type of park consolidation, and they put them all into where you see now, into, in this map where you, you're looking at, which is approximately 16 to 18 acres of park. And so in doing so, the council at the time, and at the time, we did have an exceptional benefit requirement with annexations. And the council at the time thought that perhaps there might be less recreational open space opportunities for this general neighborhood. And so they tacked on an additional eight acres of common open space onto this annexation agreement. And then they further refined that a few years later, and as you can see, it's kind of broken in half between Wyboll and Duval. And so the Wyboll portion got close to five acres, it was 4.95 acres, and then the remaining 3.05 acres was attributed to the Duval parcel. And so what this request is, is not related to Duval at the moment, that will come in later as a separate application, but they are requesting a reduction on the Wyboll portion. We did the math, we went through all of the recorded plats and all of the common open space that was provided, that's been provided in the Somerset Meadows neighborhood in the first two filings, and what's planned for in the third and fourth filing that was approved by Planning Commission recently. And we found that they were, they did provide extra common open space beyond the 20%, that's required by code, but they were 1.59 acres short of that 4.95 acres. And so that is what is, the request is here tonight.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This is a related, but not a directly pertinent question, and that is, what, how many phases are going in this particular subdivision? How many phases will we see? Was it four, five, six?
Yes, Mayor Coombs and Mayor Pata and Bagley. Yes, there's actually, so first, first filing's been built, second filing's been plotted, not fully built out. The applicant's team that's here tonight has requested, Standard Pacific Homes will be doing the third and fourth filing. And that's all that area south of Heather Hill Circle toward Plateau Road. That's third and fourth filing. Eventually, Duval will be the fifth filing, and that's on the other side of Renaissance Drive.
Okay, so my, it's a question that I'm posing, not one that I'm saying, you know, putting a kibosh on it unless, so I'm looking at the map, and it just dawned on me. So how does it work? Usually, when developers are going to be building an area, they're required to help or build the roads, right? So as I'm sitting here looking at the map, I'm seeing a lot of roads, like just hanging out there, Plateau Road, North 79th Streets, can't read the something, Rain Dancer, or something like that, or Heather Hill. So my question is, we build out one, almost two, we're going to be building three, four, and then fifth comes along. My question is, at some point, are we proceeding in this particular area so that we're going to be hit with whoever's Duval, in this particular case, is going to be having to build some roads? I guess what I'm saying is, what about access outside these neighborhoods? Once, what I'm saying is, we're putting density into these neighborhoods, how do they get out of the neighborhood? And who's going to pay for it?
Yes, Mayor Coombs and Mayor Pata and Bagley.
Because I got a call here now, he's got a checkbook there.
Carl's here. Yes, Renaissance Drive is actually, and our, our transportation planners here, but just in general, from my, just... But just in general, from my, um, just my general standpoint, Renaissance Drive is a designated collector road. So that will be brought south, all the way down, um, down south toward the Summerland subdivision. Um, and then they will be, have some, they will have some internal streets, uh, in their project for their subdivision. Uh, but basically Renaissance will be the in and out. Uh, you can also exit through their internal streets via Glen Air, Glen Air Drive, Glen Air Road, uh, down to Airport Road.
So it's going to be Glen Air and then Renaissance? And then be able to go, will, will eventual plot five have access out Plateau Road or anything else? Or will they also use Renaissance Drive and Glen Air Drive?
Mayor Coombs, councilmember, um, Bagley. Phil Greenwald, Transportation Planner with the city. Um, we've actually done some pretty good work as far as the Southwest Transportation Plan goes. So we had this question a number of years ago, and we did some work to put in some collector roadways and make those connections across what you're talking about right there, west of Renaissance Drive. Um, nothing went forward with that plan, basically, because, um, of some negotiations at the time with Boulder County. So, but that is something that we show to, or to the different developers as they come in. This, uh, plan that got general buyoff from, um, from Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the City Council. And we use that as our base plan to get the roads to go across. And you don't see them on this plan, but there are, um, basically planned locals that go across between Mount Audubon, which is the north-south road coming south off of Mount, of Clover Basin Drive. You can't really see it there, but it's, if you know where Plateau Road is on the south, you see that lighter, um, beige color next to the yellow. Uh, Mount Audubon would run north and south, connecting Plateau with Clover Basin. That's actually on the comp plan. And then we have, uh, two collectors that basically, well, a local street that we've identified to run across and get people to the collectors.
So, so as we build out, there will be traffic and ways out in addition to these particular streets?
Mayor Potem, correct, yes.
Great, cool. Thank you. See? Stop sweating, we're all good.
Councilmember Levison?
Yes, Mayor, um, I, I just want to make a request for a second reading that we get that information on how much potential there is for that neighborhood park and school. You know, looking at maybe if all of this is built out in the next five years, then will we have money to construct that amenity? Um, and, uh, keep it on our maintenance list, knowing how we're already doing that Parks Master Plan and some of the great need we have and, and what the communities already commented on. Just want to make sure that we do have recreational opportunities that are public for, or within the development for people to recreate. You know, it's, not everybody can, you know, kick a ball around in a lot that's, you know, sixty by a hundred and thirty. So I, I just want to make sure. So I'd like to move this, um, uh, forward for a second reading.
I'll second that. Let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with councilmember Santos absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is general business, and the first item is the regional transportation issues. Phil Greenwald will make this presentation.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, my name's Phil Greenwald, Transportation Planner with the city of Longmont again. Um, tonight we have two major regional issues that really need your attention and discussion. So we've brought those to you tonight. Um, we had a, uh, a specific order, but we're going to kind of deviate a little bit from it. The two major issues tonight are the Northwest Area Mobility Study, the NAM study, and then also the North I-25. This is from State Highway Seven to State Highway Sixty-Six, uh, the, the lane conversion discussion that's been going on. What I'd like to do is skip right to the lane conversion discussion and get that, uh, through some council discussion quickly here and, and if we can, and see how that goes. Um, and we'll skip through the NAMs here and, uh, talk about I-25, if you don't mind. Um, first of all, CDOT is requesting conversion of the freeway, of one freeway lane in each direction on that section of I-25. Uh, again, between State Highway Seven and State Highway Sixty-Six to a managed lane. And, uh, we've, we've, we've heard a lot of things in the news lately about this idea of managed lanes and concessionaires and things. We'd like to talk a little bit about that tonight. Uh, the reason for this, the CDOT is saying that really the voters do not want to increase gas tax, and they've seen that in the polling results. There's been a number of polls that talk about increasing gas taxes and things like that. Right now, the voters are not in the mood to, uh, to, to pass that according to these polls. Uh, without an increase in gas tax, then we're kind of left with other solutions as far as CDOT's concerned. And so they're really looking at privatizing roads as the possible solution to some of those shortfalls in revenue that they need to just basically maintain the system, much less grow it. So the idea is that two lanes would remain general purpose. And again, this is the section that was just widened to three lanes a, a few years ago. Um, the actual plan, the original plan from CDOT was to do the managed lane originally with the construction. They didn't have the resources to do it at that time. So what happened was they did build three, three lanes in, in each direction. Um, and they, the proposal is that they'd want to convert that lane then to a managed lane. That would mean that buses, car pools, van pools could use that lane for free. Um, the other two lanes, uh, northbound and southbound, uh, would be able to, uh, be general purpose. Uh, and the third lane would be toll. And so if you're a single occupant driver, you would have to pay for reliable travel times either up to Fort Collins or down into Denver. So the idea is that only if you were a single occupant driver, if you were, if you were alone in your car, you really had to get to Denver, uh, you know, in forty minutes, you can, you can make that trip if you wanted to pay for it. Otherwise, uh, free for buses and, and car pools. And the toll, the tolls on those facilities would be based on basically trying to keep that one lane free flow so that you have that reliable travel time. And again, this is, before we get into the idea of a concessionaire would be hired to install the equipment and collect the tolling. They'd also be responsible for maintaining the entire section of freeway then, uh, for that point. And that's something where CDOT's trying to, again, turn this over to a more privatized, uh, company to take care of some of these things that they're having a hard time covering at this point. So tonight, we're asking for your direction, if possible, and, and maybe some discussion on this as well. Um, to either support CDOT's request to convert that additional lane capacity to manage lanes or, or support that idea of looking into this and studying it more. Or support the lane conversion, um, if it's done in other parts of the region. One of the key concerns is this is the only place where their, where CDOT is asking for this type of lane conversion of an existing free lane. And so one question's come up, why don't they do this in the south? Why don't they do this, so, you know, along South I-25 where they just put in rail, uh, parallel to some freeway expansion on South I-25? Could you convert some of those lanes if you're going to convert this lane that affects us? Additionally, um, there's one other op, or there's two other options, support only new lanes as managed. So from now on, we would, uh, there'd be the chance of saying, uh, the council supports managed lanes, but only on new capacity or, or added capacity instead of, uh, for something that's already built and out there and free. Or should all new capacity be free? And again, that taxes the idea that CDOT doesn't really have the money to do that. So, um, uh, so there's those issues that that would take a long time before we see anything there. Um, also, there is a letter that we have available, and I apologize for not having that at your, uh, desks earlier. But we do have a letter that's coming out of the North, um, I-25. There's a new North I-25 coalition group that is asking for support on just saying that there needs to be improvements, um, on that north section of I-25, basically north of Longmont up to Fort Collins. So, um, there's the idea that capacity needs to be added, and these folks are asking for, um, support from the, from the Congress, basically, to put this on a reauthorization list. So if you don't mind, I'll go back and we can just talk a little bit more about the ideas of, um, this council direction on how you feel about, um, the, the lane conversion concept.
Well, what happens to the fees that this concessionaire collects? Can some of it, portion of that be put into a fund that could then accumulate over the years, maybe build a new lane that's not, that's more of a free lane? Or, uh, or how are they, how's the concessionaire, the biggest pocket that money is their profit? And, uh, I just want to know the details of that relationship.
Mayor Coombs, um, we did not ask CDOT to, to come here tonight specifically so we could talk about it, uh, at this. Well, we can ask them to come and give a more detailed presentation on these different things. My understanding is that by hiring a concessionaire, they would actually not just take over this section, but they would take over sections to the south as well. And use the money to be able to build more quickly an additional lane up to State Highway Fourteen and Fort Collins. So that third running lane, all the way down to basically State Highway Seven, and then turning into the fourth managed lane into Denver would, would be a toll managed lane. And that would pay for, that would help pay for the improvements that they could do to the north. So they don't, they, they'd obviously run at a, they want to make a profit.
Right.
For running and, and maintaining things. But much of that money goes into the construction of this new lane so they can make more money.
My other, you know, other thought is, you know, gas tax has been like eleven cents a gallon for, for years. And as, you know, that's when gas was like eighty-five cents a gallon, and now it's, so it's really been a reduced tax that people keep. And then, you know, our cars now are getting forty miles a gallon versus fifteen, so I can see where their funding source has really dried up. So, uh, you know, and maybe a, a managed lane does encourage people to carpool. Or, you know, if they want to get to work fast, you know, the people that need that capacity can, can pay for it. Um, I mean, I, I kind of like the concept of managed lanes, but then again, I also can see the other point of view too. So, um, I just want to, I guess, weigh in and see what my other councilmembers think. Uh, councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, I am growing tired of Longmont subsidizing the rest of the state of Colorado. And this is no different than the RTD argument. And what I mean by that is that Highway Sixty-Six to Highway Seven is basically saying, hey, we don't have enough money. So why don't you people in Longmont pay to use the highway? And we're going to save our money and put it to Denver. No different. It's a tax specifically targeting, I view it as Longmont. Starts at Longmont, ends right after Longmont. And I'm all for it. I support lane conversion. It's also done in other parts, specifically South Metro. But I'm not about ready to get behind, hey, let's give up our third lane going down to Denver. Drive slow or pay a lot. Uh, that's one concern. The other concern is, I mean, supply and demand and economics, where you set the price is dependent on, you know, what people will say, what will maximize revenue. And, you know, yeah, they might be able to charge twenty or thirty dollars if somebody's zipping on down to Denver. I don't want to pay that. I'm already paying gas taxes. I, I don't, I don't want to pay anymore. And I'm, I'm really growing tired of subsidizing Denver. It's stupid. And so, no, that's where I come down.
And I could add, mine does pay a lot of gas taxes.
Hey, he's not driving a Hummer yet.
Councilmember Levison?
So we just need to have him start driving a Hummer, what, eight miles to a gallon? The other thing, uh, I have the little, um, the figure, which is not really well marked as, well, it is pretty well marked for roads. But again, um, it's on page, um, three oh five of our electronic packet and three oh one of the paper packet where it shows the different, um, segments. I too do not like the idea that, um, everybody paid for that third lane to be constructed. And everybody living north went through a lot of pain and extra hours on the road when all that construction was happening. Just to turn around, when the biggest investment is made is to create that lane and, um, CDOT paid for that. In fact, the whole state probably paid for it. But then to turn the, um, maintenance of it and the tolling capacity over to a private entity in exchange for them building the next thing, which they're not giving it back for free either, are they? They wouldn't add that additional capacity and say, it's free. Now it's going to be, they'll maintain it, but they'll have control over the cost too, right? Any of the extension, they would toll that too, right?
Any of, any of the extension of the managed lane facility, correct that piece of it?
Yeah. And, uh, you know, we haven't really had a big discussion about this issue with Loveland and Fort Collins. It, it may impact Longmont because we travel that a lot, but for the northern communities also, um, it makes their opportunities to come and work in Longmont more expensive. It makes, um, I know right now that if you're trying to get to the airport, any of the airport bus services don't want to pay a dime for a tolling. And so as far as getting access to the airport, it's going to be another difficulty where you'll be paying, you know, in a, in a van lane. I mean, if you go to Super Shuttle, they never take E-four seventy, the Super Shuttle. And so here again, you're going to, you're going to, uh, again, restrict Longmont people's mobility, and it's going to take less time. Because the private operators don't want to pay these additional tolls. That's a cost of passing on to businesses too. Um, and, uh, I just, you know, I, I'm not in favor of, uh, of having us continue to start tolling these segments of roadway right now. So I'm in agreement with councilmember Bagley. But I, I'm also in agreement of the letter that I've just read saying, we would like this segment of I-25 looked at for being added to the, uh, reauthorization of the, um, uh, transportation bill.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So if providing toll service and maintaining roads is such a good deal, why isn't CDOT in that business to build this road up north to I-25? They, they're saying they don't have revenue from gas tax. Why aren't they creating revenue sources by, I mean, managing the tolling themselves?
Mayor Coombs and councilmember Moore, they actually do have a tolling enterprise portion of CDOT, uh, called HTPE. They are doing the collecting of the tolls right now on that section of I-25 just inside of, in the Denver, or just north of Denver. And so they do a portion of that. It, it does have to be separate from CDOT because it is, it acts more as a private business. And so they set tolls, they change tolls. Um, basically the tolls are set, and this goes back to something, um, councilmember Bagley said was, the tolls are actually set based on traffic. So if there's a lot of traffic needing, wanting to use that lane, the supply and demand, the price of the toll would go up. Um, and so they do have a branch of that, but what they're saying based on this is, uh, they didn't have the, the revenues to even build the tolling equipment, uh, in this section. That's why they built it as they did. And, and I think they've admitted that that might be the last place where they can really build extra lanes on freeways, uh, in the, in the foreseeable future. And one thing, back to...
I guess the short answer to your question is, um, they just don't have the money to build the road or to build the tolling facilities. And so what the private vendor actually is bringing into, to, to this process is the capital dollars necessary to build it. Um, I would imagine that if, if CDOT actually had the funds, it would be a different discussion, but they just don't have the capital funds to do it.
Go ahead. So we're taking a, a road already built with taxpayer dollars and turning it over to private enterprise. Am I understanding that correctly?
I think if, I, I think the explanation is that CDOT still owns the road, but they turn over the maintenance and the tolling collection to, uh, a kind of concessionaire.
So without knowing what, what's going to be done with the tolls, how, how can we make a decision whether to support it or not?
I think basically it's the concept that's being supported, but, uh, you know, we don't have details on exactly the toll structure.
So there's really no guarantee they're going to build the road north with the, with the tolling capacity?
Uh, Mayor Coombs and councilmember Moore, I think the answer would be that the only way they can build the road north in less than seventy-eight years or seventy-five years, whatever they're saying it would take to, to build that, is to turn it over to concessionaire to build those lanes and make them managed.
I get, I mean, I, in a lot of ways, it makes some sense to toll it just to increase the need for mass transit, to force the issue. But, um... But I am having a hard time with it, to tell you the truth. And a lot of that has to come, comes around to just the physical location and a lot of people from Longmont will be paying that toll or paying for that service. So as far as whether or not to support this, I really don't, I'm not ready to make that decision yet, so.
No, I have to kind of agree with something that Councilmember Bagley said. I'd be more strongly able to support this if it was done in other parts in South Metro, if we weren't just the only ones, the only region that was asked to do it. Is there any other federal matching funds by having more managed lanes? Does that give us access to more transportation funds? Is that part of the picture at all?
Mayor Coombs, I'm not, I'm not quite sure whether that would help or not, or whether those funds belong to the concessionaire to then fulfill their contract as far as building those lanes themselves.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen?
I-36 was a toll road. All the time I was going to college, we went up, we paid the toll, we paid, the state of Colorado built that and they paid it off 10 years early. And they got the money and they build it. And we need to find the money to do this ourselves instead of setting a precedent of privatizing all these roads. We have to, CDOT needs to go to the people or find federal funding or find some kind of funding instead of privatizing everything we've got. We've paid for this already and now we're turning it over to a concessionaire to be determined. And we don't have any of the information about this. I can't support this.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't support it either, but I do support this letter. So I would move that we authorize the mayor to sign this letter to Cory Gardner.
Second.
Okay, should we vote on that? Let's vote on that.
You can all sign on your way.
Okay. That passes six to zero with Councilmember Santos absent. You know, I'm not a big fan of toll roads, but boy, if you look at how much this area is growing, if we don't do something, if we just do the status quo, we're just going to have gridlock with, you know, 11 cent the gas tax. I mean, I just don't know what the solution's going to be. I mean, people are either going to have to pay higher gas taxes or we're just going to have to suffer, you know, two and a half hour drives to Denver. Councilmember Lewis.
The slippery, if you compare this with some other areas of the country, and I, we have family in the Dallas metroplex and every single road is told. It is, and if you don't have the right kind of toll tag, it is exceptionally expensive. And so when you look at the additional financial burden, while it's nice to say, well, maybe somebody who can afford, who wants to pay that extra money can choose to do it, there are people that need to get to work on time and maybe some of them are not, you know, six-figure earners. And they would then have an additional cost to get to work based on that reliability of being in the toll lane. And eventually what happens, on the tollways around Dallas, they're still as jammed. It doesn't, it seems like the toll becomes the standard and then it has no effect at all on the traffic. And in the Dallas area, they do have an access road so that you can parallel the toll road and actually never get on it. And, you know, sometimes it's actually faster because while you're stopping at each of those lights, the gridlock on the tollway that you're paying, you know, per mile on is just as heavy as the access road. So I just don't think that, to me, it's not a miracle, it's just kind of not the silver bullet and the miracle cure for some of these issues. And I think the discussion around the 3P, Highway 36 that has come up recently in the press may have changed people's minds around paying as you go for roadways through taxation.
Well, since I know how to count to four, could we at least discuss the support only new lanes as managed, as well they build new lanes? Would people be willing to support at least studying that as an option going forward? Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Speaking to your point, I would be against one. I think number two is too vague and I'm going to make a motion after I explain my motion. So I think number three, I would support new lanes so long as those new lanes are not being funded by taxpayer dollars and turned over to private enterprise. So everybody starts from a level playing field. Says, we need a new road. Hey, private company, build it, toll it. That sounds reasonable and fair. And I also, all new capacity should be free. I think all new capacity should be free and we should pay for it through a gas tax because everyone pays for it. And if you don't want to pay gas tax, then the roads don't get built. But I think turning to Longmont or specific areas in the state, particularly ones that are not flush with voters, is just not fair. So I would actually move that we say, that we, our feedback would be, you know, look into, yes, managed lanes so long as they are new and all new capacity should be paid for by universal statewide gas tax or other type of revenue increases that are shared equally throughout the state.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we've got a motion that's consecrated. Further discussion?
We have the motion read back just to make sure.
Go ahead.
Will you read what I have?
Go ahead.
Let me restate it because it was pretty messy. I move that we give the direction pertaining to the north I-25 lane conversion, that we would support only new lanes as managed. And number four, that they look into, look into all new capacity being free, free meaning finding a universal statewide way to pay for it, such as through an increase in gas tax.
And do you agree with that, Bonnie? For your second? Okay.
I have a question.
Councilmember Christensen?
When you say all new lanes as managed, managed by whom?
Councilman, well, Councilmember Chris, Danny, I think what he was saying was he doesn't care if it's a private person that comes in from scratch and builds it and manages it, or if it's a public, is that, yeah, as long as it's paid fairly from the beginning. Doesn't matter.
Okay.
So to make sure we're hearing this correct, if a private company comes in and builds it for private dollars, you're okay with the toll?
Right. And then, right.
And maintains it. So it's all private dollars, it builds it, maintains it, toll's okay. If public dollars are utilized, then it needs to be free for all. That's basically what I'm hearing.
Or if they add a lane.
Yeah. Councilmember Lewis.
I'm sorry, Mayor. So what I'm understanding is that if they're adding capacity, like they're adding a lane, that additional new capacity is not going to be told and it's going to be free unless that, well, I guess it would be, because additional capacity, they could say that new capacity is that toll lane.
Yeah.
So I'm maybe not understanding the nuance of your motion.
Yeah, let's see, can you clarify if the state wanted to come up with a plan and build a new lane themselves and toll it and build it?
If they're going to have toll lanes, whether it be CDOT or whether it be privately funded, they need to be new lanes.
Right, okay. So you don't care?
And in the event that it's, and if they want to make new capacity that will not be told, then it should be paid for by everyone through a gas tax or some other type of revenue, revenue generating source.
Okay, good. Yeah, we just don't want you ruling out the fact that CDOT then doesn't have the ability to go in for it. So now you don't care whether it's public or private. Okay, great. All right, I think that clarifies that. So let's vote. That passes five, well, let's see, five to one with Councilmember Christensen descending and Councilmember Santos absent.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the fun stuff.
You know, do you guys want to take a five minute break? Because I think this next thing could be a really long.
James not here.
Oh, that's all right. It'll be 10 minutes.
True.
That's right.
We get a little, we get, we get two and a half hours, four eleven.
Yeah.
We agreed to when they first started the study, getting that moving. So we did update you a couple times actually, the last one being November 2013, excuse me, on the NAMM study. And this is just a check in then for council direction on consensus for NAMMs. This isn't really about the overall FastTrax program. That's another separate issue and we can have RTD come in if you want to talk about FastTrax specifically. This is more about just this Northwest area mobility study. There were some questions about, they came up over the modeling results done with the study, so I just wanted to cover those really quickly for you and maybe turn it over to Sean as well. He was at all the technical committee meetings, so.
We did just want to point out, Mayor, council members, that Councilmember Santos, who of course can't be here tonight, did want us to point out his view that he felt like that there was an under-representation in the north metro numbers, which Phil will be showing us in a moment. He didn't really have another data set to use per se, but did feel like that the numbers were low compared to the estimates that were given from, for the Northwest rail line. And Phil is going to kind of walk us through how COG uses those numbers and really how that's applied to the whole region so that even if there was some skewing in one area, there would be kind of an equivalent skewing in other areas as well. So that may not increase your confidence terribly, but it is really the most reliable data source that we have. And depending on how you look at it, does match up with some of the data that we're getting from our economic development target industry analysis data as well.
So what was some of the basis for Councilmember Santos to doubt the NAMM study? Does he have specific things that are just a gut feel or other studies or?
Well, I think there were a number of us, Mayor, members of council, there were a number of us that were surprised, I think, by the low numbers for, particularly for the north metro line. But if you look at how much of that line goes through really in essence rural areas compared to the line going through really the major, you know, population centers of the northwest Denver area, I think that it does make some sense, but he really felt like that the numbers were just too low. And maybe he can, when he comes back, can give you a little bit more detail on that. That's as much as I know.
Thank you.
So we just wanted to reiterate that the consultant did increase the land use assumptions based on what we asked for. They were a little low to begin with and we had just finished our first and main studies, so we thought we had some better information about the densities in that area. So we really tried to use that data and give it to the consultant for some other information for that growth that we think we'll see down there in the next 25 years. Also, the consultants incorporated two stops between Thornton and Longmont. Those were not shown in any of the public hearings, so a lot of folks came up to me later and said, there's no stops anywhere between Thornton and Longmont. No wonder the ridership is so low. So we, there were actually two stops that just weren't shown on the maps, but they were used in the modeling. So we had one out at I-25 and 119, State Highway 119, and then one further south into the Erie area. So there were two additional stops where people could get on, get off the train there. Also, just to reiterate again the point that the model is used as a tool to compare various projects. It's all the same data going into the model. And so we use it as comparison, for comparison purposes, not necessarily to tell us exactly how many riders are going to be there on specific days. So just to go through that a little bit with you. So the assumption that city and council agrees to a few things in principle, we wanted to kind of go through these. These are some of the pieces of NAMMs that were really more kind of ancillary to Longmont. So the 36 commuting solution, or the 36 corridor was very adamant that the construction, the completion of the US 36 corridor be included in the NAMM study. And so they've done a lot of look at that. There were FastTrax programs for that already and they're just asking for the commitment to complete that corridor. And so that's part of the NAMM study. Also, the idea that there'd be further study of options related to the bidirectional managed lanes in downtown Denver, that's a critical component when you start putting all these new buses. And you'll know that the lanes into Denver, I think especially Councilmember Finley will know that the lanes into Denver are one direction in the morning into Denver and one direction out in the afternoon. And so the concern is, is that you're going to start to see congestion heading up, you know, north our way in the morning as well. And so how do you get buses and car pools and things to bypass some of that congestion that we're probably going to see, especially when you have so many buses coming into downtown and then having to leave as well and come back up and pick up riders in a timely fashion? So those are the two things and we're hoping that we can kind of get your agreement that those are okay to move forward to and agree to with the consensus statement. Also, council direction on keeping the Northwest rail in the long-term discussion. Currently, the NAMM study is showing that there is no FastTrax money for this $1.4 billion project. That's again in 2013 dollars, would be available until after 2040 at the earliest. So that doesn't, now we've lost the idea that, we used to have a 2042 date for rail would be here by 2042 and then it turned into 2044 and now.
It's never.
We don't, yeah, we don't know, we don't know when that money or when that time committed is for that.
Council? Mayor, members of council, I did just want to point out, they are not saying that it is never. I was just going to correct that statement that RTD is not saying that it's not, that it's never. They're simply saying that they are no longer able to project a date certain when that would be. They're showing zeros through, as Phil said, that 2040 kind of time period, but they are not saying never.
Okay.
Councilmember Lewis?
Mayor, I just want to point out that I think all of us will have a very long and healthy life, maybe 110 years, and we can all ride it together.
That's only if you become vegan. Go ahead.
The other point on the slide is to really point out the idea that the north metro would be removed from any further RTD study as far as part of FastTrax. But we're continuing with CDOT. So CDOT's looking at it as far as the ICS, interconnectivity study that's going forward there. So they're going to continue to evaluate that link and we're going to continue to work with them on that piece. We're also looking for council direction on supporting that shorter term bus improvements. It's related to in the NAMM study as arterial BRT. At this point, no FastTrax dollars are involved in that. It's all federal highway and it's the same way that US 36 got built without FastTrax dollars. So it's going after those federal highway dollars. And we have a chart at the end that kind of explains which dollars may be available to that project. And also the idea about pursuing those federal highway dollars and removing, oh, not the idea, but the thought that the only way that rail can be removed from FastTrax plan up on that Northwest rail corridor is if it goes to a RTD wide vote. So they, this NAMM study can't take the rail off of that, off of the FastTrax. Only the district-wide vote would have to be, would do that and if there's any ideas about replacing or anything with that, replacing that project with other projects. We're also asking for early support action on those transit stations. That's part of the NAMM study is to support, that's part of the consensus actually, is to support the early action rail and transit stations. This is really the idea about constructing what you can that would be associated with rail and bus in the interim. We talked about constructing that Longmont station. We still have that $17 million commitment that we're holding RTD to and they have responded that that is there and it's available and they'd like to start constructing the station as soon as they, as soon as possible. So we're working with them on that right now. There's also other stations in Louisville that they'd be committed to as well with this. We talked about Boulder has a station, Louisville, Flatiron Crossing and Westminster. So all four of those would be included. The other council direction item is... The other council direction item is supporting that Railroad Quiet Zones along the Northwest Rail Corridor. That's something that also can move forward. That would be paid from FastTrax and other sources. Again, this table at the end will show a little bit of what we're talking about if we can read it. So really, the NAMMs elements, if you look at the US 36 BRT, that's already committed, that's a committed piece of the project, that's part of the FastTrax plan as well. FastTrax money, RTD operations, Dr. COG funding and others. The arterial BRT would not use FastTrax, so it would use all the other funding sources available from the feds, from the state. The I-25 bidirectional piece, they wouldn't use any RTD operations money, which is that other six tenths of a cent, so there's the six tenths of the operation, and the four tenths is FastTrax. The arterial BRT would tap into that RTD operations fund, which is currently there. The I-25 bidirectional lanes would not. Early action rail BRT would tap into the FastTrax as well as the other funding sources you see. Quiet Zones as well could tap into some FastTrax, some of the small FastTrax funds. They show zeros until 2040, but obviously, there's small pots here and there that folks are hoping to tap into as they, or if they come available. So with that, that's really the discussion on NAMMs. I can go back through any slides and we can discuss.
Can you go back to the first slide, we can kind of go through it one by one?
Yes, yes. Oops. So the first assumption is that, in principle, we agree to the two pieces that aren't really related to Longmont specifically?
I don't see any reason why we wouldn't agree to that.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, the reason is only to buy into the consensus article, or the consensus letter.
Yeah, it's just showing that we're kind of a regional team, is all.
And I'm being told, you really don't have to, if you don't want to.
I don't see any reason why not to at this point, I mean, those aren't too objectionable. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, esteemed colleague. Councilmember Santos is not here, so may I play the role?
Sure.
I guess, I guess we could go, I don't, I mean, we could go through slide by slide, but I've got some general thoughts that, and actually, could you fast forward to the one with all the Xs? Because it relates directly to my earlier comment, which was, "I'm sick of subsidizing Denver." And if you look at, so the US 36 Bus Rapid Transit, I understand that we're playing as a team regionally, but that's being paid with FastTrax. If you look at the early action rail BRT stations, that's being paid for FastTrax. And then of all things, Quiet Zone Crossings, which we have been talking about, but we don't have in Longmont, nor are we going to have it anywhere, I mean, anytime soon, at least unless we change something. Again, we're paying with FastTrack dollars. I just don't, I just don't think that when we signed up for FastTrax by a vote of the public, that our expectation was that we were going to be subsidizing every other city in the RTD area, or in the district. And so my problems are that we're paying four cents for every $10 that we generate in revenue, and that goes towards the FastTrack system. That's not the RTD six cents for every $10, we participate in RTD, I'm not talking about that. But I look at it as, we have two options. Option A, build the train. We're paying for it, the voters passed it. Now, if you can't do that, give us back our money for FastTrax. That's what the law, the law says, "We will pay you, we get a train." If you can't give us a train, give us our money back. But what the law doesn't say is that we're going to keep giving you four cents for every $10 and get nothing. And so I'd actually, I talked to some members of council, and I'd actually asked that you would support a motion to direct staff, in this particular case, our legal department, to actually look into our legal standing for bringing suit against RTD, specifically FastTrax, for not doing what the voters promised. I just want to know where we stand. I would, I would like to know if it's possible to take the four cents for every $10 and stick it into an escrow account. They seem to be under the mistaken impression that if they just say that it will remain on the plan forever, it's got zeros all the way out for 2040, that, "Oh, my gosh, we haven't said we're never going to build it, therefore, we get to keep collecting your tax dollars." That's not how it works. So I think we might have legal standing to be able to say, "We're going to require them to put it into an escrow account, earn some interest, and when you guys get around to being serious about delivering rail to Longmont, we will then be serious about giving you money." But nothing in that ballot measure said we have to pay them a damn cent, but they continue to take our money. So I would move that we direct our legal department and city management to actually look into the legal possibility and standing as to whether or not we can actually force them to stop taking our money and not comply with the law that was passed.
Could I ask Steph one question before we discuss that motion? How much if FastTrax RTD comes around and they write a check tomorrow for $17 million and we build our station? How much money have we paid into FastTrax, and will the $17 billion make us whole, or will we be in a net benefit at that point?
Mayor Coombs, out of our last check of the financial data that was given to us, we were about $15 million last year of payment of that four tenths of a cent sales tax, I believe it was about $15 million, so we were very close to that $17 million piece, but obviously, we pay that every year. So I don't know what it is for 20, the end of 2013 and into 2014.
And clear up to 2040. Okay. Councilmember Lewison?
I, you know, I am entirely sympathetic to the fact that they committed to these other portions of FastTrax, and with the cost overruns everywhere, basically, we're like Cinderella. There's like no place for us at the ball, and there's no magical pumpkin or anything. However, the time to say, "We want equity," I mean, I have to tell you, there were the powers that be in coalitions further south of us who got their stuff together, and I have seen it at Dr. COG, when certain communities walk in, when there was an extra chunk of Tiger Fund money, and said, "You know, we would like thus and such." And I saw the horse trading that went on with Dr. COG, because not only did they bring their elected officials, they brought people from all of the big hospitals, they brought former congressional candidates, they brought their chamber, various chambers of commerce, and we had no one down there that night. And so what happens? They get eight, I think they got eight of the $10 million extra dollars that they asked for because of the swagger and the clout that walked in the room. And I saw it happen last year, when Phil and Councilmember Witt and I went down to this Transportation Solutions meeting down in Glendale, and up on the little facilitated discussion was Dr. COG, staff member, somebody from Aurora, and some TOD person. And the Aurora person and the other person from that, that region down south said, "You know, we want an extra stop here, and we want an extra stop there." And it was all some of us could do to not stand up and say, "Now, wait a minute, we have no stops in Longmont, what do you mean?" But the assumption is, it's like a nine-month-old child learning to walk, at some point, they realized there's nothing above their eyebrows, and that's where Longmont is, we're above the eyebrows. However, they've given all the, I mean, all the money is committed. So to stand here and, or to sit and storm and steam about it, I think that this is not, in particular, it's a, the issue with lack of funding for our segment of Northwest Rail is great to have, there's nothing we're going to do to move the needle on it. However, I think the significant outcome of NAMMs is that we have a firm commitment from every other community, from Westminster, Boulder, Lewisville, Lafayette, and the county commissioners, that Longmont is going to get additional services. We may not get rail, because there is no money for the rail, however, what we also told RTD is that we wanted better bus service now, because we knew they were pushing us off. And so the BRT part of this is to, is in direct response, I feel, to the fact that we need some better transportation. And it's not that it's going to substitute, because the commitment to build rail is there, it's just that the timeline is longer. It's just as if you're buying a house, and all of a sudden, the price goes up, and you're looking at a 40-year mortgage and not a 30-year mortgage, or a 50-year mortgage. And unfortunately, that's what we're chasing with the rail option. So I don't think anything, you know, I respect your passion around this, Councilmember Bagley, and I don't disagree with the fact that we're all frustrated, but I don't know what good will come of having, you know, an analysis done of, "Can we sit and hold our money?" Except we'll get a really nice newspaper headline from the reporter in the back of the room.
I've got a question. I've heard rumors of another Northwest Rail option that would just be during the peak transportation rush hour times, and if they did build that, then it would be like a $500 billion solution instead of the $1.4 billion solution. And it would only run during, you know, peak rush hour, so, and by doing that, the reason why it'd be so cheap is then it doesn't require the double track and the two-mile switching and all that. I don't know if that's horse feathers or what, but that's one option I've heard. Have you heard anything along those lines?
Mayor Coombs, we have heard people discussing that at a very high level, but it's still the idea that Burlington Northern is requiring that you buy a piece of Burlington Northern to run in that segment, so that's still, is the majority of that cost. So again, no money from FastTrax until 2040 for major expenditures, and so that, I think, falls under that heading.
Okay. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I just wanted to respond. The, I'm not ranting. There are two, anytime you have a disagreement with someone, and I share this common with my clients, you can either sit down and you can come to an agreement, or you can go to court and the judge can be babysitter. So BRT, a couple of things have happened the last couple of weeks. First of all, I had a conversation with Gordon Pedro. Gordon Pedro shared some thoughts, and he had some really good points, and points I agree with. He said, "We need bus rapid transit, because train's never coming, and if it does, it's going to be too expensive." However, I, when I left that conversation, I was like, "Man, he has some really good points." However, the BRT that we're talking about is not designated lanes, it is essentially increased bus service. Even the BRT, or it's just B, because it's not rapid transit, it's just bus, so the B option is not permanent. Faster, RTD all along has taken away our service at a whim. And in this particular case, it's not even coming out of the FastTrax dollars, it's coming out of RTD. So this has nothing to do with FastTrax, it's just a basic way to say, "Longmont, shut up." And so I'm not for more buses, because they're not permanent, they're not going to be in place, RTD, as soon as this goes on, a couple more years, new councils, whatever, they're going to do away with them. And so, let me put it this way, what would we do? What would the outcry and the outrage be in our community if all of a sudden, city council and city staff said, "You know what, let's start fracking." We pass the ballot, screw y'all, let's just have fracking in the city of Longmont. That's what they're doing. We pass the ballot measure, the voters passed for something, and now we have city, or not city staff, but state staff, as well as an elected body who is acting contrary to the law. I really, I really believe that. So I'm not saying that, "Oh, my gosh, we're going to rattle our sabers." What I'm saying is, you can't continue to tax an entity and essentially steal our money and give it away to other parts of the RTD district. You can't do that. And so I'm not saying you need to come forward and we need to file suit, I would like our legal department to read the ballot measure, look at the law, whether it be established or novel, and basically say, "Can we tell them, 'Stop screwing us.'" Or in perpetuity, we will always be paying this money, always. I don't want a bus station, because the BRT system, or the B system that they're offering us, is not going to be around in a couple of years. I truly believe that, based on past precedent of how these individuals have been treating us. And I also had breakfast this morning with Judy Loual, and she is in Longmont, she is our elected representative, and I got the impression, in reviewing the Northwest Area Mobility Study, which she provided, as well as what was in our packet, which is the same document, everything is telling me, if you vote and go with BRT, or B, if you do this, we're not going to get anything. All we will do is, in perpetuity, pay sales tax to RTD, so everyone else gets FastTrack. And so either give us the train, which I admit, it's expensive and probably not going to come, because the money's not there, but that doesn't mean we have to pay for you guys. So my, I don't think we should pay for them if they're not going to treat us as if we're members of the FastTrack district. It's not fair. So I want our city staff to look into the issue and tell us if we have a legal leg to stand on, because I believe we do. I need four votes. Well, thank you, Bonnie Finley. I'd like to know the answer, that's it. And then we can decide what we're going to do.
Councilmember Christensen?
So I'm looking at this potential funding sources, and I see US 36 BRT funded by FastTrax. I don't know where the Longmont BRT would be. I see the rail stations that would be funded by FastTrax, but, so we're supposed to build a rail station slash BRT station for the buses and wait for the buses to come, but I don't know where the funding source would come from if it's not FastTrax, because they're paying for the Boulder FastTrax, I mean, the Boulder BRT, but not for anything to Longmont. So I'm inclined to agree
$17 million was already put on the books as part of the FastTrack money plan, so that's already
No, we don't have a check though.
No, no.
It's on the books, but there's no check.
There's no check, so, you know, I'm inclined to agree with Councilman Bagley, because I, you know, we had, we had a, an RTD station on Main Street, they abandoned that, and now we're going to build it a few blocks north, but we don't really have any buses coming to it. I just, I see that they are not consistent, they are not going to give us anything unless we demand it.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, just as a, just as a follow-up to that statement, the, so the US 36 BRT, that was included in the original FastTrax ballot, so that's why they're showing that FastTrax money. It wasn't a lot, and they had to use it to leverage. The arterial BRT is what's being talked about as far as the Longmont piece, arterial being, arterial being the State Highway 119 segment and the US 27 segments to Longmont, as well as some others south of us, wanted to clarify. Correct. Without that idea of having any FastTrax money in the near-term future, well, even up to 2040, the idea is that any kind of highway improvements for buses would be through highway funding.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, I think we have two conversations going here. We know we're not going to have FastTrax, maybe even in this century. We are, so let's just put that to bed, I would agree that we need to find out our legal options as far as what to do with that four tenths of a cent. What I'm wanting to point out is we have some regional support now. What I'm wanting to point out is we have some regional support now from Westminster, Broomfield, Lafayette, Louisville, Boulder, Boulder County, and if we choose to do so, Longmont, to at least get more than we have, which is nothing right now. And I believe we should be moving in that direction in addition to saying, "Can we not pay that four tenths of a cent into a bottomless pit that drains into China potentially? I don't know." But at this point in time, we have nothing. We're not going to build ridership with nothing. And even if it runs on the shoulder, that facility exists today. We could have buses running to Boulder in a couple of years. Right now, my wife will not use the bus service because it doesn't work. It's totally broken. She has the ecopass, she works on this side of Boulder, and, you know, it's just, I think we need to be looking at it more as a consortium. We can go after. We're stronger as a group than we are as an individual. As long as we're going to be talking about FastTrax, we're just kind of wasting our time unless we can somehow escrow that money.
Yes, yes.
But I think it's a dual path, and I would like us to move that way. So I will support Councilmember Bagley's motion.
You know, I agree with what you just said, Councilmember Moore. I think arterial BRT is kind of a different subject, whether or not, you know, we've got nothing now, so we've got nothing to lose by working with the region to try to get something because something is obviously better than nothing. And the FastTrax is a different argument. That's a different funding source. I agree with Councilmember Bagley that it does make sense if there's a way to get out from underpaying four cents for something that we're never going to get in this next century. You know, we should at least see what our legal options are there. So I support both those motions. I think Councilmember Moore hit the ball out of the park with his rationale there.
Smart guy. Smart guy. Councilmember Levinson?
I think that it's great that people recognize we're separating some of the discussion. However, to, again, I think that we have this regional cooperation, and I don't know whether or not you, if you've got a bunch of your buddies standing behind you like we do now, supporting additional resources to Longmont, and in fact, you know, those other communities will be giving up, maybe getting some additional service and some enhancements to their transportation to stand and push Longmont's interests forward. I'm just wondering if the motion is going to jeopardize some of the cooperation in this partnership with other communities saying, "We're going to really push for Longmont." I mean, if you have a bunch of your buddies standing behind you and there's, you know, a couple of grizzly bears in front of you, do you still stand there and poke them with the stick, you know? Because maybe your buddies would decide to run away. And of course, you know, with grizzly bears, it doesn't matter if you can outrun the bear, you just got to outrun the person behind you, so.
Assistant City Manager. Mayor Coombs, to the Councilmember Levinson's point, not only are they standing behind us, but I think the mayor could attest to this in the US 36 coalition, that there have been at least two of the mayors in that coalition, including the mayor of Boulder, who have said Longmont should be first in terms of the 119 BRT. So I think that we've got significant support from our partners south to really push for us to be the number-one priority for the BRT system, at least on 119.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to point out, I don't know if it's a point in order, we already voted on bus rapid transit. Council voted it down, so that's number one. Now, that said, the arterial BRT that Councilmember Moore is talking, this is not FastTrax. This is coming from general, this is an RTD question. So, yes, I am all for, I'm not saying, "Let's get out RTD." Okay? What I'm saying is, okay, our friends are behind us saying we're first in, no, we're not. Name one thing that we're getting from FastTrax besides a bus station. Name one thing. One. Anybody in the audience? Let's open it up to, there's nothing. Our friends are not behind us. Our friends want our four cents. Big difference. And so I will work with them on arterial BRT, but we're not getting anything for FastTrax, and the law says we should. So my friends aren't with us. They'd be arguing for a train or saying, "You know, my friends, when we go out to lunch, when they eat all the food, they pay for it." Not me.
Mayor, can I jump in?
Yeah.
So I think there is a distinction there. So when you look at the arterial BRT, that is out of the six tenths of a percent that is specifically focused on RTD. And so that is a different conversation when you talk about FastTrax. There is something that I think is also important to point out on the arterial BRT is that it is also dependent on highway funding. And I think that's a big piece to really bring out because at the end of the day, we just had a highway funding conversation about I-25. And so when they talk about the improvements, just to be completely transparent, while we have a coalition talking about the RTD dollars and the arterial BRT, if the highway funding is not there, it may be that some of those improvements don't come along with it. Now, with a coalition, you stand a better chance, but I still think it's important to point out that it is dependent on another source of revenue beyond the six tenths of a percent in what's on there, and that they're, and Phil, am I correct in saying that they're looking at federal dollars for that?
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, that's the impact.
There's a bit of it I know in that conversation is whether or not federal dollars will come through.
Right.
And I just wanted to put that.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. If I could clarify, Mayor, one point, that on October 22nd, City Council did approve you signing the US 36 Coalition and Longmont letter in which the first point of that letter is supporting BRT. And so actually, Council has taken action to support BRT as an interim solution.
And I think that one was, "Support BRT. Don't lose focus on FastTrax and what we're doing." And again, I think that's part of the bifurcating these two conversations into the six tenths of a percent and the four tenths of a percent.
Okay. Councilmember Levinson?
I think the critical point about the coalition is that when it comes time for the transportation funding to run through Dr. Cog, it doesn't matter if one of those big entities walked in the room and say, "Oh, there's an extra $10 million. We want eight of it." There's going to be a bigger amount of people in that room that even we could leverage additional people besides this coalition to say, "Look, Longmont deserves this first." That that would counteract the action of some of the bigger cities that have, they walk into Dr. Cog with that additional clout and, you know, bravado that says, "We'll take all the rest of the money." And somebody else is going to, I mean, it's not just going to be this coalition. I think there's recognition that there's going to be more money that needs to be invested in this northern area, especially Longmont making these connections. Now, the other thing we haven't talked about is the fact that the arterial BRT within the region will have better connections between Lafayette and Louisville than we do now, as opposed to the only option is you go through Boulder and then you go out again. So the point of the coalition also is to support these intercity resources within our northern area. And I think that's very important because you want people to get between these other cities without having to think, "Oh, we're going to go to Denver to be able to go to Lafayette or Boulder to go to Lafayette." It makes no sense whatsoever. So I don't know. The other thing is if we do, if part of this, the point six is the BRT arterial funding, you know, is RTD going to look favorably on us if we're looking to say, "We're going to explore the option of try to withhold the point four." And, I mean, I think that to Councilmember Bagley's point, if this coalition is really there, maybe we need to go and persuade everybody else to say, "We're going to hold point four, too, until Longmont gets theirs."
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think personally, so if we have legal options, you know, I would be all for putting in an escrow, interest-bearing account that says, "When you guys pony up and you come through, we'll pony up and we'll come through." And I just think, I've been on council for two years, we have had zero progress on FastTrax. I mean, we've had a lot of talking, et cetera. Hat in hand, you know, I'm kind of done, you know? We haven't been hat in hand on any other issue. I don't think we should be hat in hand on this one. I think we should, and the motion that's currently on the table is only, I just want to know the data. I want to know if we have a legal leg to stand on. And if we do, then all of a sudden we have a stick. If we don't, then we don't. But I want to know where we stand.
I think that's a reasonable motion. It's been seconded. Why don't we vote on that motion? Wow, that passes 6-0 with Councilmember Santos absent. Council City Manager Dominguez.
So I guess the other component of the question is direction on the arterial BRT in the six tenths of a percent and how Council wants us to proceed with that.
I think we're for that. Yeah, we're for that.
So do you want, yeah, I'll make a motion that we move forward the arterial BRT and with the support of our partners that are moving this part forward.
Okay. All right, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes 6-0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
Mayor, and councilmembers, the next one would be just going through these items.
Okay.
And so the next one is supporting that early-action rail transit stations direction in the consensus letter as well.
I don't see any reason now that we know which side of the First and Main to build and since it might be part of our overall strategy for downtown to not, to go ahead and try to get that transportation built, since we've already paid in almost $15 million of that 17 anyway.
Councilmember Bagley?
I actually think we should wait. It's not, I want to know the answer to the legal solutions first. I don't want to sell my inheritance for a $17 million bus station that we're never going to use. I mean, I can imagine a palace down on First and Main. What, we're going to turn it into an art museum or, I guess, I wanted, I don't want to accept $17 million in FastTrax savings if we're not going to get BRT and if we're not going to get the railroad. So I want it, you know, but right now, I don't want to accept it. I just want to just kind of keep that on the back burner until we get an answer as to what are our options.
Okay. So delay that.
That's my idea.
Right. Councilmember Levinson?
So can you explain to me what that item actually means? Because we don't want to say, I don't think we want to say, "Ah, we'll wait for the $17 Or do we want to say, "Can we just wait for that?"
I don't think they have a check ready.
Yeah, they do.
They do.
They do have a check ready right now.
Right now, they do.
We'll get it.
That's what I worried about, is we say, "No, it'll get spent somewhere else."
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levinson, I mean, this is just part of that consensus piece where we're just either putting support behind this idea or not as far as the early-action rail and transit stations as something that could move forward is under FastTrax.
And I would mention that Phil has worked tirelessly to make sure that our coalition partners have supported us in the $17 million that we get something. Now, I agree, I understand what Councilmember Mayor Purten-Bagley is saying on that, but it has been a hard-fought battle to keep our coalition, as well as RTD, focused on the fact that several years ago, a few years ago, as part of the Eagle P3 project, we really lobbied them to set aside some of those savings that they garnered from that project and set it aside for Longmont to get this station. I'll also mention that this station would be used for our local bus service. So right now, we don't have a station where buses kind of come together. So granted, it would not probably have the use that it would have when we had a full-blown BRT if and when that happens, but it would be used as a station that we don't currently have since the facility on South Main was closed.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, I guess I don't care because I don't think the $17 million is coming this week or the next week or the next month. You know, I mean, okay, great, you want our $17 million bus station. Okay, fine, but we've been saying that for two years, at least maybe even longer, I don't know. But I don't see it. I remember Councilmember Santos insisting that they write us a check when Kemp, anyway, someone from RTD was here, and they refused to commit to it. And so although you guys have worked tirelessly, you know, they keep stringing us along. And so, and again, I'm reluctant to say, "Yeah, sure, build us a bus station," because again, there are no FastTrax dollars currently directed towards Longmont.
Well, to be fair, we kind of put things on hold because we wanted to know what the NAM study said because we didn't want to build this bus station on the wrong side of Main Street, knowing that the train was going to come up North Metro and have it built on the west side.
Right. But now that the NAM study's coming back, it's saying we're getting nothing from FastTrax.
Well, at least it's saying, if we do get a train, it would come from Boulder.
But we're not getting one.
Well, I know, but at least it's telling you deterministic which side of the Main Street to build a station.
Turn on all the mics, people. Just turn them all on and have a conversation.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. As you know, I'm a woman of few words, and I am in support of the early-action rail train station, so I would move that we support this.
Okay. So shall we vote on that motion? Okay, that passes 6-0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
Mayor, the last item is this council direction on supporting railroad quiet zones along Northwest rail corridor as well, and this would come from FastTrax and other sources. And it would only affect the portions of rail that are on the FastTrax plan. So up to Main Street would be the last, the furthest east, quiet zones would happen.
And they wouldn't build the quiet zones unless they built the Northwest Rail. I mean, they're not going to build the quiet zones.
Mayor Coombs, actually, they are saying that this is an early-action item that we should get now, as soon as we can, before the rail. This is for the existing freight rail.
Okay, okay, I understand.
They build a quiet zone.
That's right.
Sure. Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I really see, the only value to this would be the cost shift out of the city's coffers to FastTrax. And, you know, to me, I am not so bothered by the noise when I'm sitting at Sunset or Nelson waiting for that train to go by as I am at 2:00 in the morning when I'm fast asleep. So this, to me, does nothing really to, the most critical impacts of the railroad noise is in the residential zones, and this would have no impact whatsoever in the residential zones. And I just, I mean, wow, gee, it would be nice, you know, to see some money, but given, you know, the option of, do we do quiet zones where we don't really care that it's quiet? It's not really being quiet for FastTrax? Yeah. Unless they make the quiet zone at First and Main. I mean, that would be, but we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have input on prioritizing that. Like if we would say, "You only have money to do one quiet zone? Are you going to do it at First and Main, you know? Are they going to bury the railroad track, like tunnel it through downtown? Oh, gee, that's terrible. I love that. Okay." That, the only reason I'd support it is to actually have an impact where it would actually matter to us.
Well, wouldn't it matter in the future if we built high-density downtown in the new area? I mean, it seems like you have to- new area? I mean, it seems like you have to, you know, envision the future, and as long as this is coming, it's something for fast tracks. So I don't see why we wouldn't wanna support it. That's my opinion. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The law still says that they need to build a train. That's what the law says. So I'm for this, because they've gotta build us a train or face legal consequences, or figure out a way to give us our money back. So I'm for this.
If I can answer, if I can answer Councilmember Levinson's question, I think one of the things that it does is, when you look at the total cost for quiet zones, I believe it's in the neighborhood of $6 million. And basically, as we've looked at it, that would be an expense that we were looking at from the city's standpoint of absorbing. What it would do is reduce that amount and narrow the gap in terms of the areas that you brought up, which then makes the discussion a little more manageable for us, as we look at quiet zones in those other locations that are east of Main Street. So what it does is it buys down the overall cost to the city and makes the discussion manageable.
Councilmember Moore?
Well, let's just cut to the chase. I move we support that initiative as well.
I'll second that. Councilmember Levinson?
And my assumption is that if money comes from other sources, for example, if this, what Senator Bennett, you all are working on to create some kind of a grant system through a federal agency to mitigate railroad noise, we would access that money first, and, and the fast tracks money too, so that it would end up being zero for us.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Again, but the only problem is that, again, if we vote for this and support it, there's nothing in here that says that we're gonna get our quiet zone. Why wouldn't they just put it in where the railroad is down in Longmont, or down in Denver?
Along the Northwest Rail.
Okay, so, okay, so here's the other thing, if you look at, so, so here, I mean, page six is your Northwest Rail. So from Denver through, you know, Federal Heights, Westminster, Northland, Broomfield, Lafayette, Boulder, Niwot, Gun Barrel. So at some point, someone in that big scary room is gonna go, well, why in the world would we spend the money on a quiet zone when the Northwestern Rail doesn't even go to Longmont? So, I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been, let's vote. All right, it fails with Councilmember Levinson, Councilmember Mayor Protem Bagley, Councilmember Finley, and Councilmember Christensen descending, and Councilmember Santos absent.
But he would've voted against it. So, I can down for negative.
Thank you.
Hey, you moving on?
Yes.
Your next, your last item is an update on Emerald Ashpor, and Ken Wicklin, our city forester, is here to present this.
Mayor Coombs, councilmembers, Ken Wicklin, Forestry Division, City Forester. I promise not to take as long as the RTD thing, okay?
We'll hold you there, I promise.
Not that it's not important, this is, this is very important too, but I'll try to make this pretty quick, I hope. I wanna spend a little time talking about this insect, and then I'll open up for some questions, okay? So, in the beginning, I understand in your packet, you got a lot of information also in there, right? I don't know if you had a chance to look at all that stuff, but I'm sure you all are on a major learning curve. So are we. Forestry's been on a major learning curve for the last five months about this insect. You know, it was discovered in Boulder, and since then, the last five months, we've gone to numerous trainings, workshops, seminars. We've had people fly in from the Midwest, experts that have dealt with this insect since day one, professors, entomologists, foresters. We've talked to foresters on the phone. We've, we've listened to their stories from their cities. And we even had a council member from Naperville, Illinois, share his take on what's happened back in their community. So it's been, it's been quite a journey. One thing we've learned, though, we have one huge advantage here in Colorado. They've gone through it back there, so we can learn from their successes and mistakes. So that's, that's definitely an advantage for us. So, let's begin. Okay, EAB, it's gonna be a three-letter thing that you're gonna learn a lot about over the next several years, I can guarantee that. And of course, that still stands for Emerald Ashpor. It is a native insect of Asia, okay? It's not native to the United States. It was first discovered in 2002 in Michigan, but it actually probably arrived on shipping packages from Asia and in the Detroit area. And it, well, the rest is history. Let's talk about the biology of it real quick. Upper left-hand corner is the beetle, and that is the adult stage of the beetle. What happens is, it eats its way out of the tree, and it creates this unique D-shaped hole. You see that hole right below there where the finger is? Then after that, it flies off, it feeds on some foliage, it comes back to the tree on the bark, lays a bunch of eggs. And then those eggs hatch in about 10 days, they burrow back into the tree. And you can see up in the upper right-hand corner, there's a larva that starts to grow. And in that process of growing, it eats a lot of the wood material right underneath the bark. And that's the, that's the living, the area where the water and the nutrients flow up and down the trees. So when that gets compromised, then the tree will die. It's amazing the damage that this small insect can do. It's like about a half inch in size. And a few examples, a little hard to steer on these, but some before and aftershocks of potential EAB impacts. So here's, on the left is the before shot, and on the right is the aftermath. Left before, right after. Left before, right after. These I took off the internet. They honestly don't do justice of what's really going on back in the Midwest. This is the latest known distribution map of EAB. And like I said, it started in Michigan. And if you see all these red dots all over the map there, those are the originations in that county where they found it, okay? There's a lot of dots showing up there. The blue lines are actually the quarantine zones, okay? Some states are quarantined, and then also different counties are quarantined. And then you can see there's quarantines around Kansas City, and now, of course, there's quarantine in Colorado. So there's 22 states that have infestation of EAB. And what's really pretty amazing with this insect is that this started in 2002. That's just, that's just 12 years ago. And how this has spread that far from the origination point of just in Michigan. So it's, it's pretty amazing. If you look at the distance, like between where most of the red dots are, and then you look at, like, there's a lot of space between that and Kansas City, or a lot of space between here and Colorado and back in the Midwest. So how did it, how did it get to that point? I mean, this insect only supplies about a half mile, maybe two miles. So they believe what happens is it gets delivered by humans and firewood. And Colorado being a draw with Rocky Mountain National Park and whatnot, people are probably begging firewood from the Midwest out this way. How it ended up in Boulder, we don't really know, but they believe is probably due to firewood. We, just about a week, week and a half ago, we listened to Deb McCullough. She's a professor at Michigan State. She's been involved with this since day one. And fascinating to listen to her down at Denver at program two weeks ago. And then I'm on a committee where we actually got to sit with her for another two hours to just kinda drill her with a lot of different questions. And she made this statement. She says, "EAB has become the most destructive forest insect ever to invade North America, both in terms of the number of trees that have died, and in terms of economic impacts. Over the next 10 years, the economic costs of EAB will be over $20 billion." So it has major financial implications here in Colorado also. Let's talk about Boulder. This is the tree that it was first found in. It's kind of a north boulder. One of the forestry people saw some of those D-shaped exit holes, sent samples in back to Michigan, got it confirmed. And once that was done, the United States Department of Agriculture, Colorado Division of Agriculture, Colorado State Forest Service, CSU, Quap extension, numerous people got involved with kinda doing more research on what was happening in Boulder. So again, here's the tree. You can see how small the hole is compared to a dime over there on that far left. And then you can see those are called galleries. It does, the larva makes a serpentine effect back and forth of the tree. And if you actually see those D-shaped holes down on the bark, that means the tree's probably beyond help. That was on North Boulder, right across the street. There's about five other trees that were also infected with EAB. The insect usually starts at the top of the tree and works its way down. So it usually takes care of the upper crown first. It's also an insect that's extremely difficult to detect in the early stages. So the tree can actually have it and you don't even know it. Here is the quarantine map of Boulder County, Colorado Division of Agriculture. The smallest area that they would quarantine is a county. So once it got found in Boulder, they decided to quarantine Boulder County, and that happened, I think, was on November 12th. They did extend that into two areas where they have landfills out in Erie, and then south of Boulder on Highway 93, there's a landfill down there too. So they wanted corridors to at least get to those landfills so they could dispose of the material properly, especially, you know, infected material. In Boulder, they decided to do a delimitation survey. And basically, what they did, if you look at the map on the left, you see the foothills to the far left, the map is, you know, pointing north, basically. Up in B4 and 5, you can see Boulder Reds. And then down about in the middle of the map is kind of Arapaho, kinda in the F layer, the lower line of the F, is kinda Arapaho, kinda gives you an idea. So they took a GIS layer of their ash trees, and that's the green dots in the background. And they put a grid pattern over that, okay? And they got, those are one, one-mile grids. So they have 38 different grids. They took samples in every grid, like 10 tree samples, okay? And then they would cut those down, cut, cut branches out of the tree, actually, and bring them back to the forestry office, and would be sampled later. This was a painstaking endeavor. Like nine cities helped with this process. We were one of the cities that helped out, went down and offered up some time to help determine how far this beetle has spread. And E3 is where the very, the previous slide I showed of the dead tree, that was in E3. And then now they found it in five different one-mile grids in Boulder, okay? At CU Research Center Campus, I think they found it in 15 trees in that area. Don't know exactly how many trees have been found, and they do say that it could be in other grids, they just didn't find it. So if they took two samples from every tree, 10 trees per plot, that comes up to like 760 samples of material that had to be looked at. And this is stuff that requires a draw knife, and it's a very slow, tedious process. And up in the left-hand corner is Carol Amara. She's our extension agent here in town. And she, to her credit, she coordinated doing this whole process of doing the log peeling. So it's quite the endeavor. You can see the labeling on some of the logs, and you can see the larva up in the upper right-hand corner. Quite the effort.
Councilmember Levinson, quick questions?
So can you, if you find, can you identify the insect by the larva? I mean, if you find a, if you, if there's homeowners in Longmont that see their bark coming away in that pattern, if you can capture a larva, can you take it somewhere for someone to determine if it's Emerald Ashpor?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, yeah, the best idea would be to put it in a jar, okay, with alcohol inside, and then take it to the extension agent. So take it to Carol. Bring it to us. We'll be glad to, you know, get it down to the right people and stuff. There is an individual in Fort Collins that can absolutely confirm if it is it or not. Otherwise, they will send the samples back to Michigan, okay? So the high-risk area right now is in the center of Boulder, obviously. I've talked to Kathleen Alexander, she's a city forester in Boulder. And presently, they're looking at treating only in some of those grid patterns, those one-mile grids. Ideally, it would be good to do more, but, you know, right now, that's what their focus is looking at doing. Try to really slow, if they can treat some of the trees in that area, they'll kinda slow the growth of this, this insect down. The, there's some new brochures that just came out, it's like 30 pages long, that the Extension Service just published. Whitney Crenshaw from CSU did a great job in these publications, and they're on the EAB Colorado website. And in there, you'll see that, and I think it's also in the council communication, you'll see that they recommend treatments if you're within five miles of the infected area. Back east, they say 15 miles, 15 to 30 miles. So it's much smaller here, and there's reasons for that. And I think some of it is there's a lot of prairie, like between us and Boulder. So that's one, one thing. But you really don't wanna start treating until you're exactly in that area, okay? Where the base of those arrows intersect there, that's basically Boulder. And I think in a short time, it's probably gonna start going out into the other counties. Probably where ash trees have naturalized along river corridors, that's, they're gonna follow that path, is what the belief is. And I think in a short time, you're probably gonna find other counties becoming quarantined also. This is probably one of the most important slides, I think, here, is to kinda understand a little bit more about how the insect behaves, okay? So if you look at this graph, on the lower axis there, that's time or years. The upper axis, the percentages, is the, the number of insects. And it's also, it's, it's the number of infected trees, okay? So you can see, it's, it's a kind of a bell-shaped curve. And this is how this, this insect works. It starts off rather slow, and then all of a sudden, it just climbs rapidly. And then once it peaks, and that's probably because either all the trees are dead, or the trees have been treated, and therefore, there's no more food source for the insect, and then it just starts to drop off pretty rapidly. Okay, so that's kinda the bell-shaped curve. Chad Tinkle is a forester for Fort Wayne, Indiana. And he spoke up in Fort Collins not long ago. And in Fort Wayne, they didn't do anything the first couple of years when it first was found in their community. And at, they started, they started doing something proactive. After, after it was first discovered, it took a while, but they got their, their act together, and they started doing some treatments. And they thought they had a pretty good handle on it. And about four years, he says, it just skyrocketed. And about four years, he says, it just skyrocketed. He called it the death curve. They had 9,000 dead standing ash trees in one year. So this is, this is the behavior of this insect. So there's the, there's kind of the death curve area. So Boulder right now is where that red arrow is. So they have some, they have some decisions to make on how they're going to kind of combat this. And one of the, one of the thoughts is if you do treat some of your trees, you're at least slowing this insect down, of course. So give an example of how common it is to see ash trees in Colorado. It is the number one planted tree. It's our number one species in town. You know, we're at 14%. Boulder's 13, Fort Collins 22, Grand Junction 28, and Greeley has 30% ash though. It's a very, very commonly planted tree. You know, we estimate there's like 40, over 40,000 ash trees in town. So there's going to be a tremendous amount of wood waste that's going to happen from this eventually. So we need to plan for that. A rule of thumb with foresters, you never want to have over 10% of one species. So we learned that with Dutch elm disease years ago, but the, the beauty of having a tree inventory on GIS, you can actually manage and control your program so much better. And we just recently put that on to our system. So where do we go? We need to develop a plan. We have updated our ash tree inventory just recently, so we know where our trees are, the sizes, the conditions of those. But now we're working on coming up with a written document, a written management plan. And we do, we do need to do a greater job of education and outreach. We've talked to a lot of people, a lot of people still don't know anything about EAB. So we need to kind of work on that and spread the word. We need to kind of prepare people for what's ahead. The card on the right was published by Colorado Department of Agriculture. It's kind of a little, almost, almost like a door hanger to get out right away to people. And this last thing on there, it says Epic Info, the last bullet under the third category there. Epic stands for Invasive Pest in Colorado. It's a committee and I'm honored to be on that committee with, with the forester from Denver, Boulder, Fort Collins, and Longmont represented. And we have like entomologists from CSU, we have, we have the, a great knowledge source of people. So we're able to get front information right away from that committee, so that's really, really helpful right now. And of course, the website, eabcolorado.com is put out by the Colorado Division of Agriculture. And that's the best source to go to right now. We'll try to keep some stuff going on our, our website too, but EAB Colorado is the best place. This is a picture of Thompson Park, you know it well. Both Thompson and Collier are loaded with large mature ash trees. That would be our first focus to make sure we save those. But like I said, right now, we're not there yet. We're not, I don't think we're ready to start injecting trees or treating trees. It's not far off, but right now, not today. So questions?
I have a question. If you had like little, small sampling trees right now in our inventory, wouldn't we want to like immediately just replace those with another species as, because it's going to be a lot cheaper to deal with that now than to dispose of it 15 years from now and it's got a lot more mass and...
Yeah, Mayor Coombs, that's a great point. I think you're probably going to see that, that verbiage in the management plan document. We do want to look at removing the small tree, probably the smaller trees. There's something called preemptive removal.
Right.
Might as well deal with some of that stuff in the near future. We also have condition readings on the trees we recently inventoried, so we're going to take care of removing some of the poor quality trees, you know? We're going to get those out of the way too. Yeah, there's some other things that we want to look at doing on some of the small trees. We actually want to girdle, take off the living tissue. And that actually releases a pheromone, so the insects are attracted to that tree. So we're going to try that in some areas too. And then later come back and take the top portion of that tree out and then sample some of those trees. That's something we learned from Deb McCullough just last week.
Councilmember Christiansen?
First of all, I want to thank you for persuading me about 20 years ago not to put an ash in my front, in the hell zone where I wanted one. But what you said made sense, so that's a good thing. But I'm wondering whether these, what the distribution is around town, is, are they concentrated in one area or are they pretty evenly distributed?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christiansen, that's a good question. We, we printed up a map recently, so there is a even, fairly even distribution in Old Town. We have ash planted in every park in town. We stopped planting ash a while back. So, you know, we have a mixture of ages, but you know, there, it's, it's our most common tree. It's, it's all over town. Lot of homeowners have planted. We have some HOAs and stuff that are just like ash after ash after ash, just loaded along the streets, just like you saw in some of those previous photos. So yeah, there's, there's potential losses here.
And do they, does this, does this go to other trees or is it really specific to ash?
It is specific to ash, homing. Yeah. There is one species they're finding that's resistant, it's called a blue ash, Fraxus quatalangica, but it's...
Of course, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know that one. But we don't, we have hardly any here in town. We don't have any in town, we have hardly any in Colorado, I should say. There's a few in Denver.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay. I was aware of this issue and I've arranged for Carol O'Meara to come to our HOA and I've invited several other HOAs in our area to visit that meeting next month. Also, our arborist is advising 10 miles because of the difficulty in identifying the fact that the tree is infested because it takes two to three years to actually kill the tree. So we're trying to, we're weighing that right now as to whether or not we should start a little earlier than five miles. The other thing is, we're only dealing with city trees here. If we don't, if residents don't treat their trees, will it create a bigger problem for city trees for a few, two years? And if, is this going to be a permanent program for the city to deal with treating this infestation?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, great questions. It's, it's, it is an insurance policy if you want to treat your tree. Okay? It's, it's a personal choice if you want to do that. Based on the extension agent, Whitney Crenshaw, he recommends five miles right now. And I, I believe in that also. I, and there's, there's a number of reasons for that. There are, I have a slide I can show you. I wasn't going to share this, but, but since we're talking some of the treatments too. There are several ways to treat trees. Okay? There's, there's something called a spray up. You just spray it onto the trunk of the tree. It's a very soluble product and it, and it works its way right into the trunk of the tree and works its way up. It's systemic. You also can pour a product around the base of the tree. Okay? Or you can inject the tree. Drill holes around the tree, like every six inches down at the base. And it's a pressurized system that has to be purchased that can be product injected in the tree. Emectin benzinate is really the, it's also known as Treeo, is really the best product out there right now. But there are concerns with, with Whitney Crenshaw, myself and other forestry people that, that repeated drilling in the tree creates wounds in the tree. And if you start that too soon and you have, this is a long-term endeavor. You know, it could be 10 to 20 years that you've got to be treating your tree. And if you have to drill your tree every two, now they're actually saying three years, that's a good thing. That's brand new, that just came out last week too. If you got to drill your tree every few years, it's causing these wounds and, and trees don't heal like we heal. We get new tissue, they compartmentalize and it's a permanent wound on there. So there's some concerns. Back east, I think it's a little different because the growth rings are, are larger, there's more moisture, you know? It remains to be seen and actually CSU is going to do a study on wounding effects on the trees over the next several years to see, see what they're finding. So I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot what your first question was.
I was just commenting on that we're trying to educate the local AJOEs.
Yeah. Oh, John Clark contacted us. We're going to be at a HO, neighborhood group meetings coming up, I think it is, in April is this one. So I'm not sure if it's exactly the same ones, but, but we are going to be doing a slide presentation, talking to the neighbors, trying to get that word spread out.
Okay.
I think to answer your other question is yes, the, this could, this could extend for a period of time. So I don't know if it's indefinite, but definitely years, 10 to 20 years in terms of what we're dealing with.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, this is not a suggestion, this is just me asking a question. All of the paper's gone, so I guess it doesn't matter. But the, is there, is it like vaccinations? Do we want to require citizens to vaccinate their trees? I'm not saying to protect the tree. What I'm saying is that if, if this is going to go away, don't they all kind of got to be vaccinated? Don't they all have to be treated at some point until the epidemic passes? Because if you have a handful of people that don't treat their trees, you know, and then at some point we stop treating ours, I mean, it's never going to go away.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, yeah. If the tree's not treated, it'll die.
Okay. So sooner or later, all ash will be gone if they don't treat it.
Exactly. Remember that bell curve and stuff?
Gotcha, gotcha.
So eventually when they all die, and if we have trees that are treated that we want to keep, then at some point that insect has, you know, just doesn't have a food source anymore and they just...
Gotcha. So it's truly their choice. Okay. And then I guess the other question is, what do you need from us? What, what direction other than we're pro-ash? You know? I am pro, I'm pro-tree, you know?
Yeah. You would believe all the lines that are coming out regarding similar states like that. Save, yeah, save my ash tree. I think we need to look at a management plan and throw out some scenarios that would you all mull over and kind of decide what direction that we need to take. Whatever direction we take, it's going to, it's going to cost some dollars to, to deal with this.
So as we had this, as I discussed this with Dale, obviously his staff are going to be coming and putting together some plans. We wanted to give you an update because depending on the direction we take, cost is, is a big issue. And I think you've seen that in information where six digits in terms of dealing with this issue. So we didn't want to surprise you with the plan when we brought it to you. And we wanted to give you an update and let you know this is what we're dealing with and is, once we get that completed and have a better sense, we will bring that to council, but this was an update.
Okay. Well, thank you. There's no further questions. Appreciate the presentation.
So I guess it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close. Final call, public invited to be heard. Now it's time for mayor and council comments. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Penley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I do need to announce my business of the week this week. And that business would be, oh gosh, now I can't find it. It's Fly Elite Aviation out at the airport. They take care of airplanes. So if you have an airplane, it's a great place to go. Try Elite, Fly Elite Aviation.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to comment. It seems very interesting that the president and CEO of ExxonMobil is now suing the state of Texas over fracking. So the largest oil producer in the world and the largest fracker in the world decides he doesn't like it in his backyard. So I think we got to keep going after our deal with Longmont.
Councilmember Levinson?
I imagine the city attorney has already taken note of an additional revenue source to support our efforts. Couple of things. First of all, I want to thank all the council members and Mayor Coombs and City Manager Dominguez for coming out and participating in the two-day site visit from National League of Cities staff on the, the technical assistance grant that's being funded through Kellogg Foundation, where they've come and done a site visit to look at the efforts we're doing around early childhood education and aligning that early learning with assessments and standards for assessing where children are in their development in the early years and also trying to look at future youth violence prevention through better early childhood education. So I want to thank Mayor Coombs for, for kicking off the initial discussion and the welcome on Thursday along with City Manager Dominguez and Councilmember Mayor Protam Bagley and Councilmember Moore for attending the dinner last Thursday night. And I also, they, they, everyone made a very positive impression and, and my feeling is that they got a very good understanding what Longmont's about and how the great work we're doing. And I also want to thank Karen Oney, Singh and Mack, and Christine Pacheco, and Lynda Kopecky. And the list can go on and on, but there were so many different aspects to what the city does that they saw. It was really marvelous and, and I learned a tremendous amount too. The other thing is that the, there was something in our information section of our packet on the mosquito control program evaluation update. I just want to make sure that beyond the survey that we're sending out to this, from National Research Center, that we actually capture enough of the surveys coming back. I know it's, we're sending it out to very many random people, but we tried to do a lot of good information when we were doing spraying last year and we failed miserably. We had so many people coming to council that were very concerned. I want to make sure we loop in early with those folks who came to the podium and ones that wrote us on council email contacts and what we had gotten for phone calls, to be sure that we cover this issue well in advance of actions we'll be taking in the spring and maybe some additional priorities you'll ask us to continue.
Definitely the plan on that issue. We're also thoroughly evaluating the data because to really understand what the data is telling us in terms of where we're having success and what's creating that. So that's definitely part of what we're going through.
And then lastly, there is a workshop for National League of Cities for those of us that are going around the budgeting for outcomes for a team approach. And I just want to suggest if we can, the four of us that are going, do that and get signed up for it. I know we can't sign up online right now, but I don't remember what day it's being offered, but I'll check that out. And if I send you the email, Sandy, can you get it to everybody? Thank you.
I would also like to thank Councilmember Bagley or Mayor Protam Bagley for attending the meeting that I was unable to attend. I'm sure he...
You're welcome, Shlott. You're so welcome.
Anyway, city manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.